Ready, I called to order the regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. The regular city council meeting is conducted via...
I can hear you talking.
What? Ready, I called to order the regular meeting. What's happening?
Okay.
Oh, okay. The regular meeting is conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-29-20 issued by the Governor. The city council meeting is also being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and YouTube. Members of the public will not be able to attend the meetings at the Campbell Council chambers physically. However, public comments will be accepted via email at clerks, C-L-E-R-K-S, office, O-F-F-I-C-E, at campbellca.gov during the meeting and before the close of public comments on an item. Please note that the city cannot guarantee that any meeting sent during the meeting will be received by the close of the public comment. If you choose to email your comment during the meeting, please indicate in the subject line "for public comment", and then list the item number you wish to comment on. Comments will be read during the comment period for the item and will be subject to the two-minute time limitation. If you would like to submit an oral request or if there's any item on the consent count that you wish to comment on, please send an email now to allow the city clerk to receive them. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bybee?
Chris?
Councilmember Resnikov?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
There.
Mayor Landry?
Present. Okay, I'm gonna lead the present pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Special presentations and proclamations, there are no none. Communications and petitions, there are none. Okay, this is the time on the meeting agenda where we hear oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the city council on any manner not on the agenda. The law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action at such time. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly to respond to oral requests. Has the city clerk received any comments not on the agenda?
We do have a comment for oral requests.
Please read the oral request.
The Campbell Farmers Market has been closed since the initial shelter-in-place order on March 16th, 2020. The Urban Village Farmers Market Association website shows we expect Campbell to reopen as soon as the shelter-in-place is lifted. The Campbell Farmers Market is the only UVFM that remains closed. With Dr. Sarah Cody fluctuating milestones for lifting the SIP order, it seems unreasonable to allow Dr. Cody and the County of Santa Clara the ability to cause such undue financial hardship on our local farmers and vendors. City council has stated that the reason the farmers market has been closed is because the typical farmers market space on Campbell Avenue in the downtown is insufficient to provide proper physical social distancing to meet the county's regulations. However, the UVFM is able to meet the strict regional guidelines at five other local farmers markets. Why is the City of Campbell the only jurisdiction where the farmers market has been unable to open? Perhaps the city should consider temporarily relocating the farmers market to the Campbell Community Center parking lot, which would provide ample space for physical social distancing, adequate parking, support for our local farmers and vendors, and most importantly, a safe outdoor shopping experience for our residents. This could be a temporary solution that would be beneficial to the community and when or if ever the SIP is lifted, then the farmers market can return to the downtown and provide the much-needed support for brick-and-mortar businesses. Thank you for your consideration. This is Michael Bryan.
Sorry, guys, I have to plug in my iPad here. What's going on? I'm sorry, my battery was... Okay, so Brian, can you please follow up again with the vendor for the farmers market? I know you've been in contact with him.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So now we're at council announcements. I'm gonna start out... I'm gonna start with making a comment about what's going on right now. As a community and as a nation, we have been enduring incredibly challenging times. Over the past four months, the COVID-19 virus has had detrimental impacts on every aspect of our lives. It required everybody to come together by filing the... Sorry, following the guidance to stay at home. While not yet over and as difficult as this has been collectively, we have been successful to help minimize the spread of COVID-19 by flattening the curve. Now, after enduring these months of unsettling times, we are facing even more challenges related to the recent tragic death of George Floyd. It is important to recognize that this incident has caused pain for many people. As we listen to people's peaceful expression voiced by protesting and hearing their message, it has recreated an inflection point. There is a call to action for each of us to become part of a solution. I believe we have the responsibility to work together. Now, our task at hand is how do we move forward? I do not have all the answers, but I can say the Campbell residents have the ability to create solutions. Later on our agenda, we will be discussing the reopening of our businesses and our community. To do this effectively, it is important to make sure that all voices are heard. As such, I encouraged people to have a voice and to participate. The city council and staff are providing you a venue to have your voice. Ideas have been shared and the community is coming together. It is an honor to highlight the large volume of input we have received tonight with suggestions on how to reopen our wonderful city to provide opportunities for businesses to be successful. This is a great example of how to bring a community together towards a common cause. Thank you, everyone. Tonight, by working together, implementable solutions will be developed that will be beneficial to the entire Campbell community. As the mayor and along with city council and staff, I thank you. I will share this quote, which I think is very timely. Together is how we move forward. Together is how we make change. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The rest, I'm making the rest of the mayor's announcements. The City of Campbell continues to work closely with our partnering agencies to monitor how the coronavirus is impacting our communities. We are actively monitoring the information provided by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and reviewing guidance provided by the county's Public Health Department. We continue to take proactive steps to prioritize the health and safety of our employees and our community members. Our focus is to maintain essential services and keep you informed. Santa Clara County Health Officer Dr. Sarah Cody announced further easing of the shelter-in-place. Outdoor dining at restaurants, in-store retail shopping, recreational activities that do not include physical contacts such as swimming are now allowed, as is outdoor gatherings up to 25 people for religious services or cultural ceremonies will be allowed starting this Friday, June 5th. Full details of what is allowed under the modified order can be found on the Public Health Department's COVID-19 page at SCCgov.org. Next slide. If you need any assistance, either finding food, helping to pay the household bills, needing a place to live, there are resources and other essential services available if you either dial 211 or go to 211.org. 211 is completely confidential and is accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Next one. The County of Santa Clara directly provides free COVID-19 testing through the Public Health Department and through Valley Medical Center hospitals as well as other clinics. There are several drive-through locations throughout the city. To find a clinic or community testing site closest to you or to make an appointment, please visit SCCgov.org/cv19testing. Next slide. Thousands of Americans can soon join the ranks of disease detectives in one of the most important battles against the coronavirus. Contact tracing has helped slow or stop previous epidemics such as SARS and the Ebola breakout. Santa Clara County is looking for case investigators with appropriate language abilities to reach out to the community. To request more information, please email contacttracing@ioc.sccgov.org. Beginning last week, the U.S. Census Bureau workers began visiting neighborhoods with P.O. boxes that did not receive mail at a physical address to verify their address and to deliver the 2020 census paper questionnaires on doorsteps. Census Bureau workers will have a valid ID with their photograph. They will not ring doorbells or knock on doors or ask to be allowed into someone's home or request any other personal information. For questions about this operation and to verify the identity of a census worker, please contact the U.S. Census Bureau at 213-314-6500. For your, our local Census 2020 information, visit the Santa Clara County Office of the Census website at SCCgov.org. We are excited to announce that the Santa Clara County Library District will offer curbside service at all eight library locations beginning mid-June. Patrons will be able to return items and book an appointment to pick up materials placed on hold between the hours of 1:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. For more information about this service, please visit our website at SCCLD.org. Please continue to visit the city's website at campbellca.gov for up-to-date information on COVID-19, adjusted city services, canceled events, police department services, the Campbell Community Center, and other business resources. The city, now, I'm sorry, Brian, now our city manager will provide an update of city services and staffing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate that lead-in, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just talk briefly about city services and some updates. With the changing health order, there's a lot of questions about what services the cities are providing and how they're being provided and what we're doing to prepare for eventually allowing the public back into our facilities. And I want to speak briefly to that this evening. Although our city facilities are closed in compliance with the current health order, we are providing many essential services to the Campbell community. City staff is generally working in the office or through a telework policy. Staff that's not assigned a full work week is utilizing personal leave balances to compensate for unworked hours. As the city looks forward to the county revising the health order to allow us to reopen to the public, city has prepared its employees to return to work and we've prepared a procedure that will explain to our employees what needs to be done when they do return to the office. These procedures will require employees to be screened when they're reporting to work. Staff will also be required to follow certain safety procedures when working in a group setting and/or working with members of the public. The following updates provide a brief summary of current and anticipated services organized by city departments. In health order, our Community Development Department is fully operational right now. The only real difference from the services we're providing now that we didn't provide prior to COVID-19 is the public physically can't be in the building. We implemented online permitting system that is working very well and allows for continued service of the public for issuance of development and building permits. Inspection services continue to be provided by the city. Staff has been supplied with appropriate protective equipment and they're performing inspections either in person or virtually. And where necessary, they are doing inspections inside building with the appropriate protective gear. Meeting with the applicants and the public are being conducted virtually or by phone. However, in some cases, in-person meetings with applicants is required. Those in-person meetings are being conducted by appointment outside of city hall building utilizing social distancing protocols and appropriate protective gear. As the city has resumed building permit and processing, certain public meetings such as Planning Commission are gonna begin to be resuming. When necessary, these meetings will be planned to be conducted virtually, much like this meeting on Zoom. We would encourage the public to participate in those meetings as much as possible. Meeting agendas can be viewed from the city's website at campbellca.gov. Upcoming dates and meetings include our Site and Architecture Review Committee is scheduled to meet on June 9th virtually and on June 23rd. Our Planning Commission is scheduled to meet June 9th, June 23rd, and July 14th are the next dates scheduled for those. When the county health order is revised to allow the public to enter our city facilities, city is prepared for consolidated public service point for planning, building, and development services, looking at one point of contact for the development service customer support. Public service counters will be equipped with clear plastic shields and have appropriate social distancing and vaccination measures implemented. The Finance Department is currently processing payments such as business license renewals and transient occupancy tax payments through the mail. The Finance Department is also currently working extensively on budget development and working with the city auditor to prepare for the comprehensive annual financial report. As we move forward to being open to the public in the future, Finance is also exploring a new business license program that would better integrate with our online building permit system and provide opportunity for online renewal and payment. Finance staff is pushing to implement this online business license system as soon as possible. Human Resources continues to answer staff questions as new laws such as emergency paid sick leave and emergency family medical leave. Human Resource staff is also working on budget and labor-related issues with all labor groups. Staff is also critical in preparing employee policies and procedures such as our return-to-work procedures that I just mentioned when the city facilities are open back up to the public. Staff is also working to assist with payroll-related issues, update work status, telework agreements, and process personal transactions related to this pandemic. Information technology is experiencing less issues related to employees working remotely, but does play a crucial role in these virtual meetings as we saw this evening. Technology is always a little bit of a challenge to get working just the way you want it, and IT continues to provide that support for virtual meetings. Staff in the IT department continues to implement a citywide phone replacement system, our recreation system, and replacing our meeting video broadcasting systems. Public safety, although Police Department lobby is closed to the public, most public safety services are fully operational. The only thing that we're really not doing in public safety is citation sign-offs. Those are temporarily suspended until further notice. Public safety staff is transitioning away from telework and staff will be working normal shifts in the office. The Police Department has sufficient protective equipment for the next six months. We are tracking the use of this equipment and making additional purchases as necessary. In public works, our maintenance services have fully resumed. We are experiencing high use of our city parks and open spaces leading to increased solid waste disposal and cleaning of restrooms. All city parks are open. Playlots, exercise equipment, basketball, handball, and the community center track remain closed. Staff is evaluating opening of the track in light of the recently revised county order and will be making a decision on that in the coming days. The streets maintenance section is taking on project work. That is, that they're doing work that we would normally pay contractors to do. It reduces contract costs and leverages existing staff to do this work. And the reason that makes sense right now is because during this pandemic, traffic volume is especially light, so street maintenance can be done efficiently using city staff versus contract staff for that work. Engineering Services is currently rotating staff between work in the office and work at home to fluctuate a safe work environment in the office for those employees that are here. They continue to work on projects like we just discussed at the last council meeting, the all-inclusive playground at John D. Morgan Park and the Winchester Street resurfacing project. Recreation and Community Services, the adult nutrition program is operating with pickup-only from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Staff from our Recreation and Community Service Department is also coordinating food delivery for those in need. Staff is coordinating a brownback lunch food program and delivering up to 30 participants. Staff is conducting limited summer camp training next week and is planned to start a reduced and greatly modified program pending budget allocations for any programs that would begin after July 1. A limited sports camp and adult fitness class is planned to utilize contractors, not staff, to ensure cost recovery. For future camp, dedicated leaders will be assigned one per group of 12 children. There will be one staff person assigned to three groups of 12 or more to provide additional support, cleaning and sanitizing that is necessary in those camps. All staff will wear appropriate protective equipment. Recreation and Community Service staff continue to coordinate well checks on older adults and members of our adult center and continue coordination for food delivery options and other social service needs. Staff in our Recreation and Community Service Department is implementing a food distribution program at both Rosemary and Capri Elementary Schools on Friday, and that lasts through June 19. Facility rentals at our Campbell Community Center and picnic reservations are canceled through June. Virtual recreation activities are launched periodically and will continue through the summer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. At this point, we move on to the consent counter. Is there any council member that would like to pull an item from the consent counter? See, none?
I move.
Has the deputy city clerk received any comments on an item on the consent counter?
We have not.
Okay. All right. So... I'm sorry, Liz, were you saying something?
I move consent calendar.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Hi, Paul?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Hi.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Thank you. The next item is public hearings and introductions of ordinances. We see none that have been agendized. Now, the highlight of our meeting is under New Business. It's item number six, and this is a discussion about outdoor dining on public property as part of the city's effort to support the business community and initiation of zoning text amendments to implement such allowances. If anybody wishes to comment on these items, please submit now to thecity@clerksoffice@campbellca.gov. Each email received prior to public comment period will be read for the record. At this point, we have a presenter, our Community Development Director, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So, the staff report was prepared, of course, prior to the new county order. And the reason why I put in there the initiation of zone text amendments is to give you a little bit broader ability to decide if you want to change your zoning ordinance or any other provision of the Campbell Municipal Code. There are different options that you can select, however, and utilize existing tools in your toolbox, and we're gonna talk about that in a bit. So, as you know, this, we're operating under a county order due to the COVID-19 pandemic and most businesses pose except for those that are considered essential. What we're seeing now is a gradual loosening of restrictions, and that's a good thing because that's gonna allow some of our businesses to reopen. However, they're gonna have to reopen with additional regulations that govern them. And, you know, one example would be if you enter a building, you have to wear a face mask. I think you've all seen those signs on doors in grocery stores. If you don't have a face mask, you can't come in. That's gonna be happening for retail establishments that will be opening as well as the typical social distancing. Now, restaurants as well are gonna be, continue to be restricted to operate inside. However, the county order is allowing restaurants to open outdoors. And luckily, many of our businesses in the downtown, in fact, the majority, if not all, have some form of outdoor dining. So they'll be able to begin that right away, starting Friday. Now, the restaurants, what we've been hearing is that they still feel that even though they're allowed to operate outside, the majority of their seating is inside. So, we've heard requests on how to expand on that seating on the outdoors. That's pretty much why we're here, because staff, we can only work within the confines of the zoning ordinance and the Campbell Municipal Code, and it's tightly written in for very good reasons. So, we're coming to you to begin this conversation as to how does the city council want to move forward with either loosening existing regulations or utilizing the regulations we have and doing it in such a way that is to your satisfaction. One good thing about our municipal code is on private properties outside the downtown, outdoor dining, any restaurant that doesn't have outdoor dining could propose outdoor dining with 12 seats or fewer as a material permit. So basically, it's a building permit that need to meet accessibility requirements and other building code standards. They meet those, we issue a permit. Well, greater than 12 seats requires a conditional use permit, and that's Planning Commission, and that takes some time. Now, on public property within the downtown, as you know, if a restaurant wants to have dining in the public right away, it's an outdoor dining permit. It's a staff-issued permit, pretty easy to grant. But there are restrictions. For example, the restrictions would be the outdoor dining can't expand beyond the tenant's space that's leased. Now, that's pretty confining for very obvious reasons. So the question, one of the questions that we would like to discuss is to what extent can that be a little bit more... Now, other allowances of the city council is through special event permits. Special event permits is an authority granted by the council to allow special events on public property, and that could be within a street and within a public parking lot, to name a few. And still, there are, even within that confine, there are standards that have... And still, there are, even within that confine, there are standards that have to be met. Another tool that is available for us is the encroachment permit. The encroach permit is a permit issued by the Public Works Department that allows certain activities to occur with, within public property as well. And that is a little bit easier to administer because it's, it's a staff issued permit, doesn't have to go through the series of, of boards or commissions or councils to, to adopt. One of the things that we've been hearing, we received a lot of desk items. I've read them all. There are concerns expressed by the public around the downtown of actually closing Campbell Avenue down because of traffic, parking issues, noise. There's a couple of comments about closing Campbell Avenue down would eliminate curbside pickups for those who want takeout. And then there was another comment that said, well, if you, if you expand these allowances, they shouldn't just be confined to the downtown, they should be citywide. So we have provisions that apply to the downtown. We have provisions that apply outside the downtown, and we're trying to figure out ways to give broader allowances for these businesses to, to rebound, to, to recover from what has taken place. So this is the nature of the conversation that we need to have, and we need to also understand that there's a lot of logistical issues associated with, so, for example, issuing a special events permit to allow dining in a public parking lot or issuing a, an encroachment permit to create parklets, thereby preserving travel lanes, say, in your downtown. For example, how will these parklets be improved? What would be the protect, protective perimeters such as a K-rail or some heavy, you know, block of either a planter or just cement that would protect people dining from vehicles? Another thing that we need to be aware of is the county order also limits parties to no greater than six. So we're not going to see this, this desire to have a table for twelve people. It just wouldn't be permitted. We'd probably be seeing four tops or two or like a bistro type of seating arrangement, not, not big tables and, and seats. So we really want to let you begin this conversation so you can give staff direction. We've given you some ideas of what is out there, what we can look at, and we know timing is of the essence. If you pursue any type of zone text amendment, that will provide a longer term fix. The drawback, of course, is it takes a long time to do that. It will take maybe three months to go through a process of drafting ordinance provisions, holding a public hearing with your planning commission that then recommends to the council, then the council has to have a first and second reading. It could take some time. So if there's a way we can utilize the tools we currently have, that may be a preferred scenario. So with that, I just, I just want to now hand it over to you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and let's begin this discussion of, of ways that we can help our restaurant community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Very nice. So now I'm going to take questions from the council, but I'd like to ask one question upfront. So when we're talking about encroachment permits, we're talking about public property, correct? Like public parking lots?
That's correct.
Okay, but for someone to take their personal parking spaces in their private parking lot is when we would need to have the zoning permits, the zoning ordinance changed and or receive a different permit? Is that correct?
Yeah, on private property, say, Hamilton Plaza, Campbell Plaza, those types of centers. Yeah, you know, the, the parking is there for a reason. It's there to support the businesses. We know that it's not heavily parked now because a lot of stores are closed, but to create a long-term solution, that would require a zone tax amendment. The other way of looking at it is we could follow the council's resolution of tolerating these types of businesses that may be operating outside their approved uses, you know, during this pandemic. And when that's over, then the expectation is that these businesses would have to be the norm.
Okay, so I saw, we're going to take questions. I saw Rich, I think you raised your hand.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me. So it seems like, well, I'm just hearing about a lot of cities talking about it. I know Sam Licardo recently was making quite a talk on, on doing something like that or having a program. I know talking to Brian that Los Gatos has been actually planning this before the pandemic. They shut down part of their main street there. And I know in Palm Springs, many of our cities here in Coachella Valley certainly have have, have been doing this already. So, but, but they had the advantage. I mean, most of the counties and the state have allowed restaurants to open at least a couple of weeks ago, so they're already experimenting with it. So that would be my first question. Have we looked at what, I mean, the obvious one is the big elephant in the room, San Jose, what they're planning on doing?
Well, yeah, we, we've seen some of their design guidelines that they have. I'm not all that familiar if they've actually implemented a specific program. I've, I've been provided information and had conversations with Los Teno, Los Gatos staff about their program. You know, it, it's certainly very doable, the, this, this concept of parklets. And many years ago, when Amy Brown was the city manager, we were, we were acquiring parklets then. So this is, this is not a new thing. This has been around for a while. The, the question is, is this something you want to, to implement? If you do, then we'll need to regroup as a staff and come back at your next meeting and explain exactly how, how to do it based on your direction.
Would it, one more question then. Would it? I mean, I, I would think, I guess, it's a question, though, of prun yards and so, that's all private owned land there with, at the moment, a lot of, a lot of parking, et cetera, that's not being used because most of the shops and things still remain closed or, you know, you go up, up there to get your food, but it's still not at maximum. So is that, is my assumption right? Would it be easier on the prun yard then to start talking about downtown if we're just going to take those areas, for example? I know there are others, obviously. We have other areas with, I talked to somebody which.
Private property is a lot easier because you're not, the business wouldn't be obstructing a right of way. A right of way is, is there for a reason. It's to move vehicles or park them. Whereas in a private setting, there's a lot more common spaces that could be utilized and not create obstruction. The only issue, though, is that they would be expanding beyond what we anticipated as a city. So there would be a conflict there. With that said, how we've been addressing those types of comments or requests is basically utilizing the City Council approved resolution that, you know, we're not formally allowing any deviation of an entitlement. We're just tolerating it while this pandemic occurs. So if they, if prun yard folk want to expand dining areas, well, that, they'll, they'll do that, and, and we won't enforce the code. And hopefully they comply with ABC rules. I had a conversation with ABC this morning. They're, they're very, they're laxing their standards as well. You still need a permit, though, through ABC because they still need to identify.
The dog bomb. Go ahead, Paul. Were you done, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Ann, do you have any questions?
Yes, so the, the new order that takes effect on Friday allows for out, outdoor dining as well as the takeout that's been, been allowed to occur to this point. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the, the takeout has been, we've been allowing that from the get-go. You're correct. Outdoor dining will be allowed this Friday, of course, with the series of standards that have to be met. And I, I named one of them. You can't have more than six people in a table, and I think there is a weird standard that you all have to be relatives or related, this thing. So.
How do you enforce that?
Yeah, I know, that would be difficult, but there, there'll still be standards that they'll, the businesses will have to follow.
Andrea?
So I, I'm having a lot of audio difficulty, so I didn't really, I didn't hear any of that, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not your fault. The other question I have is that there is no allowance for indoor dining is with the, the six foot social distancing at this point. That, that doesn't come into play on Friday. Is that correct?
That's correct. That, that's not, that's not permitted.
Thank you.
Say that again. What is not permitted?
Indoor dining is not permitted under the county order starting Friday.
Okay. All right, next, Paul, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you. So Director Kermoyan, so just to clarify, so you said they can start as is, ones with patios can start as is on Friday?
Yes.
But in your, in, in your review of, say, let, let, let's start with downtown because maybe we know that a little better. The reality is some can't because, because you look at Sushi Confidential, great patio, but that patio exists to facilitate their takeout and their pickup. So they can't use that patio or they don't have any takeout or pickup. So if they don't expand beyond that, they really can't use it. And even when they have inside, it'll be limited inside. They still need half of the side to stage the pickup. So as long as these guys are still doing a lot of takeout and, and Uber Eats and DoorDash and whatever, I'm thinking a lot of them, a lot of them that need that frontage service space can't use their existing patio. And, and that seems to me that's a lot, that, that's all the ones that are, that today are trying to survive on takeout. They're using that space.
Well, I think that's, that was a design option of Sushi Confidential. They didn't have to put their cash register right at the, the perimeter edge of their dining space. They chose to do that.
But you got to take, you have to take orders somewhere, right?
Well, they could do orders online and come, I don't know why they're not allowed to walk into the building, pick up their order and leave. They do that at all the other restaurants I've been at.
Oh, I've seen, I've seen most, my experience of most do not, okay?
Yeah, they, they walk into the building, the, the DoorDash, Uber Eats, and, and they pick it up from, and then they.
I, I, I guess I'll say, I've seen others the same way that, that when we look at this, I'm trying to stay out of comments. I don't think it's a preference for some to just pick up. My, my second question, last question. Did I hear you right? I don't want to go through zone text amendments and planning commission, things like that. Whatever, if we want to do something as quickly as possible, you were talking a resolution that allows activity during a period of time as we did recently. Is that, is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
I, I, what I was saying was it had to do with the resolution you passed regarding tolerating non-compliance during this pandemic.
So we can, we could do something like that, you're saying, if we go down zone text amendment and all that, that's planning commission, that's, that could be weeks, that could be months. And I'm looking, I guess, I'm looking for options, whatever it is we decide to do, I'm looking at options for what, how do we do things quickly? Because I think, I think we need, can't lending a hand, you know, on, on Friday or Saturday as opposed to three months from now. It might not be Friday or Saturday, but you know, the, the idea.
Right, and I, I think there's limitations, though, in terms of how to utilize a resolution. And I, you know, I would defer to the city attorney on how much flexibility local government really has of utilizing that tool. There still needs to be some form of relationship with your municipal code and plan. But of course, we're always open to, to ways to expedite and, and be more flexible.
Okay, and that would be the last piece of that for the city attorney. Are there things that we can do more quickly than others? That, and there may be things that you don't have a comfort level can be done, and I think if we can find that out upfront, it'll help our discussion.
Yes, as I think the discussion was going, one of the things you can do while perhaps we're working on a longer term ordinance change would be to adopt a resolution that essentially makes enforcement of current restrictions a low priority, which is what you did essentially to allow downtown uses to expand the services that they would normally provide into something, into providing products or services that allow them basically to sell things that they would normally use as part of their process, but normally wouldn't sell it by itself. I mean, you can use that same tool. I would note that, that, that even if council gives that direction, staff and all levels of enforcement have their own discretion as to whether or not to proceed and enforce an existing ordinance. But that would give clear direction from the council anyway to staff as to what, what level of priority to either enforce or, or rather not enforce existing regulations that prohibit things like using parking spaces for something other than parking.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one, one, one more, please? Back to Paul. It, so you mentioned parklets and, and essentially being in that parking area in the street? I've seen them where, where they are platformed and all that, and you have gutters and things like that. Is, is that, is that a logistical requirement because of the gutters and the curvature of the street? Or is that a requirement? Do you have to build anything there? Can you just put tables and chairs in the street? What, what's the, what's the minimum way to get that done? Because I see some structures.
Yeah, the, the Public Works Director and I have had some very surface level conversations, but the theme is that there should be a safe and secure border in the dining area. There should be a level surface. So if the street has a crest to it, it's going to slope to the curb and gutter. Should be an even transition leaving the curb to the parklet, and we would envision, say, a wood deck type of construction.
Okay, I, I assume, I assume Campbell Avenue has that curvature, but in like, First Market, you have one-ups. It doesn't matter. You can, you can work the legs.
Right, right.
I'd have to build something. This would be on the, on the restaurants to build something in front of their own establishment?
Right, and you know.
Their facility.
Exactly, and I, I think in terms of accessibility, ADA accessibility, I would have to defer to my building staff, but as long as the restaurant is providing the required seating, it doesn't have to be in that park, but it could be, you know, adjacent to the building outside. They meet their ADA requirement outside the parklet, still, but still outdoor dining. We would have to explore that, but there should be some pretty basic uniform design features that, that complement the downtown and not detract.
Thank you.
No, anymore, Paul? Okay, Liz?
With the mayor's permission, I'm going to ask to reserve my time for the discussion point. I would only say that I think the Community Development Director has given really sufficient overview of, and I'm going to use this term not meant to be detrimental, of the bureaucracy, the rules, the things that make a, a city work successfully and the need to comply. I am, as Councilmember Resnikov said, looking for new ways of thinking outside the box and something that can be done quickly, and I think the discussion will help us bring that to mind. But I also wanted to say that we need to consider our retail business, not just our residents, restaurants. And then the final comment is the ABC has done a very good job putting together criteria and a booklet along. and a booklet along with the governor's guidelines on needs to be done.
Okay, Liz, this is question period? Not comment, sorry, I just, we're in the question right now.
Okay. All right.
I'm just getting off on the comments, so I want to make sure you're on mute, Liz.
Never mind, I will forget my.
Keeping us on track here, okay? Okay, any questions?
Point where it's not constructive to interrupt.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, got cut off. Okay, she's on mute. Okay, any more questions? I have, I want, I have a question regarding encroachment permits. So those are only for the public right of way, correct?
Right, they're, they're typically for allowing improvements or some form of activity within a public right of way. In terms of being in a parking lot, I guess you can also have an encroachment permit in a public parking lot.
So for instance, the public parking lot that's across the street from City Hall? That could potentially be a place to have tables or.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that internally. We, we still need to ensure that the business operation can operate fluidly without feeling like a catering service. I mean, then you bring in health department if they have to bring their food there because they don't have immediate access to their kitchen. That's why a parklet logistically has a lot of good points to it because if they can feed off their normal operation without having to recreate a restaurant in a parking lot.
Okay, all right, so unless there's any other questions, we're going to go to our public comment period. Any questions? Okay. So the deputy city clerk, or I'm sorry, the acting city clerk, have you received comments? And if so, can you please read them?
Yes, we have quite a few comments. Okay. Hello, I was told to send my questions here. One, why isn't outdoor lap swimming, swimming reopening? San Mateo County has done it safely. I have been and they have taken great measures to enforce. Bay Club La Scatas can do the same. Two, churches reopen for sacraments. My son has been waiting four months to get baptized at the Catholic church. We're not asking for a full mass or even his godparents there. Just dad, my son, and the priest wearing face masks. My son's soul is essential, and if he dies suddenly without being baptized, he will be stuck in limbo forever. I get being safe, I support it. However, now is the time to start opening things up in a safe measure and exploring safe options. I'm a new mom whose son's almost whole life has been in quarantine. I haven't been able to work out or save his soul from original sin according to my religion. At some point, mental health and religious health suffers greatly. Best, Michelle.
This is Luciano Sacani, owner of La Pizzeria Restaurant. You may have already received or thought something similar to this comment. To allow restaurants to deploy more outside tables, I propose to close East Campbell Avenue to traffic and use it as additional patio-like space for restaurants. Traffic on East Campbell Avenue through downtown Campbell can easily be diverted on the two parallel one-way streets, Civic Center Drive and Orchard City Drive. Best regards, Luciano Sacani, La Pizzeria.
I am Carol Puya, owner of Tesoro's Baro Divino on Campbell Ave in downtown Campbell. As a restaurant and wine bar owner, I am in favor of the possibility of street closure on Campbell Ave on certain days and hours for the use of outdoor dining to serve customers for food and drinks. My feeling is that this would be a good start to help to restore the vibrancy to downtown Campbell and to help the economy. In my opinion, this would be unlike any other event that has closed Campbell Ave in the past as those events have traditionally brought in tents that have blocked businesses, business storefronts and visibility to businesses. This would serve as an open air mall for walking, strolling, shopping, eating and drinking. I see this as a win-win for all. Thank you for considering my opinion in this matter. Campbell does care, Carol Puya.
Dear Campbell City Council, I'm a Campbell resident and homeowner. I believe that the council is looking at ideas for how to safely start to reopen some businesses. I have always thought that it would be nice close off the east to westbound area of East Campbell Avenue in downtown and leave the north to south streets open to traffic and parking. Then allow the restaurants to extend their seating into the whole sidewalk and possibly part of the street. Of course, there would need to be a pedestrian path through the middle of the street. This is similar to what is done on Lincoln Avenue in Miami Beach and could allow for restaurants to have more outdoor seating that allows distance between tables. Thank you for hearing my idea, I hope you will consider it, and that's Grininger.
My name is Melissa Zenzorti. I have been an owner in the restaurant industry for 21 years and never has the restaurant industry been in such a dire situation. Abolagio Restaurant is in need of your help and we need it now. As social distancing will be a term that will take us into the next year, our restaurant will be forced to cut capacity in half. In an industry where profit margins are small and getting smaller, our survival is all but impossible in this manner. This is where we need you. We would like you to expedite the process that would allow us to use the parking lot spaces in the front of our restaurant to create an outdoor dining experience that will entice people to come and spend in a safe and spread out environment. We need to have this up and ready so our community knows we were diligent and prepared for the shelter and place lift this Friday. If they see there are no safe options downtown, they will take their money elsewhere. Now more than ever, social media is an instant way for our neighbors to talk. If they come downtown, we want the chatter to be positive, excited, proud that Campbell was on top of this. Making swift decisions to create a downtown experience the best it can be in these unusual and temporary times. We would like to use beautiful planters or fencing to cordon off the parking spaces directly in front of our storefront, increasing our footprint, adding tables and umbrellas, simple, fast and effective. These parklets have been already built in the downtowns of San Carlos, Redwood City and Menlo Park. Carmel, California has allowed their restaurants to take the entire main parking lot in their downtown. They were safely spread out but completely full this past weekend, with people grateful the town created such an experience for them. People love to dine outside, but now it's a means of health and safety unlike ever before. Please consider allowing us to get this done now, work with us, make this a priority so Campbell is ready. The parking spaces serve no purpose if they continue to sit empty. We will take as many as you're willing to give us so we can start preparing, hire back staff, order food and be ready. Let's give our residents what they will be in search for, a safe, spread out means outdoors to be with friends and family to return to some kind of normalcy. Luckily, we are in a season that will allow for this outside experience. This is a temporary solution that our very existence will be hinged on. If residents come to eat, they will stay to spend in town. Take the unprecedented measure to get this approved and make residents and visitors proud to stay, eat and shop downtown Campbell. May your families and loved ones stay safe and well, thank you for your consideration. Melissa Zenzorti, owner of Abolagio Restaurant.
No way do I want to close downtown Campbell, too much traffic and no parking, Cindy Hardgrave.
Nextdoor has told everyone to email you before the meeting tomorrow night. Some guy is trying to get the Campbell Ave completely shut down. As a 16-year resident on Civic Center Harrison and for the residents along the whole border of downtown, we would be more slammed with loud motorcycles, muscle cars and general overcrowded parking issues than we already are. People who don't live downtown don't understand the concept of mitigating and diffusing as much of the noise as possible just to try to stay sane. I understand that the businesses need to survive, but residents need to be considered simultaneously. Please be thoughtful as to how this would affect hundreds of homes lining the downtown area. It's not right to force us out of our town we love. Hopefully, we can come up with a win-win situation. By diverting all traffic to the one-way and residential streets where there's already no parking and traffic, the crowded mess would be a nightmare. Thank you for reading, Campbell resident.
Hello. We understand there's been different ideas about making outdoor space more easily accessible for restaurants. So we wanted to point out a few things for your consideration. One, currently because all dining rooms are closed, 100% of restaurant revenue is being generated through takeout, curbside pickup and delivery. Of these sales, the high majority comes from no contact services. Specifically, curbside pickup and delivery. Two, closing East Campbell Ave effectively eliminates curbside pickup and creates a barrier to those who want takeout. I.e. they would want to find parking spaces somewhere farther away, walk to the store while possibly coming into contact with others. Closing the street will not help restaurants or retailers, and we are opposed to any action that materially impacts the only revenue stream which has been consistent through this crisis. Three, advocates of closing East Campbell Avenue will contend that closing the street will provide restaurants with additional seating outside, thus making up for some of the inside seating that is lost due to social distancing requirements. However, the frontage of most restaurants will only allow for two to four tables while still maintaining social distances. This is a far cry from making up for lost seats inside and will actually cause restaurants to incur additional costs in order to serve those few outside tables. The bottom line is that we do not believe it's prudent to close the main downtown thoroughfare and jeopardize our current sales by effectively eliminating curbside business and creating a barrier for takeout. The effort of adjusting our operations for dine-in, whether inside or out, which includes incurring additional labor and other expenses so we can adhere to new reopening requirements, will likely further erode our already slim margins. Simply, we believe that closing the streets will exacerbate matters and we are opposed to it. For normal circumstances, we understand the benefits of a walking downtown. However, things are currently far from normal.
Madam Clerk, we're at two minutes.
Okay, let me finish this sentence, closing the street will not yield the same results. Historical data points of walking downtowns are not applicable during a pandemic.
I didn't get to read, that was from Angela Pace, owner of Blue Line. I didn't get to read her complete email, but I just wanted to note that all of these emails will be posted online with the public agenda packet. The next email says, this is in support of the new business agenda item on the agenda for June 2nd, 2020. This is a great idea that hopefully can allow restaurants to open and operate as well as other businesses equitably. It would be lovely to figure out a way for all residents to participate on a regular basis, even when the farmer's market is not on, and definitely would allow residents to stretch our legs more as well as the kids. I'm sure lots of people have ideas along the lines of Sunday Streets in San Francisco, which is such a great community event. People can maintain social distance while feeling like a part of the community and be safe. Obi.
My understanding is that the council will be discussing a shutdown of Campbell Ave through downtown as a way to help businesses have the space to support social distancing while recovering from the weeks of closure. I understand parking may be a concern, but the city handles this already during the farmer's market on Sundays and a slight inconvenience is worth the extra support to downtown businesses. Our downtown is so nicely set up for this type of closure with the one-way streets on each side of the town. And no decision needs to be permanent. I hope you will consider giving this closure a try on a temporary basis, summertime, and then evaluate the setup for the future. I look forward to walking down the middle of our downtown soon. Danielle Cohen.
Just voicing my support for the proposal to let Campbell Restaurants open up again. Other towns have pedestrianized the main street and have outdoor seating, and it's very safe and pleasant. Can we also do something like this at the prun yard? Cheers, Tom.
Hello, Mayor Landry, I am a resident of Campbell and I would like to voice my support for finally opening Campbell Avenue in downtown to bikes and pedestrians. Deliveries are more suited to the north-south streets, given that they are perpendicular to the axis of traffic flow and thus out of the way of conflicts. Parking capacity is plentiful at business lots plus parking garages. And there are exactly zero handicap spots along Campbell Avenue. Consider pedestrianizing the main street in downtown as currently. Outdoor seating is not pleasant and some people intentionally drive loud vehicles down the street. It is a nuisance and there is too much of a new opportunity there.
Madam Clerk, you want me to take a few here?
Yeah, you want to tag in?
This next email is from Susan O'Brien. Please use this and ignore previous email. We applaud the city council's effort to support our local restaurants and businesses by discussing various options to permit additional outdoor dining due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We support and encourage the city of Campbell to adopt a streamlined process to help facilitate the placement of outdoor dining on public property. This is definitely a good start to helping our local restaurants and businesses, both those in the downtown and those throughout the city, with options to help facilitate their economic recovery. But now our city can and should do more. In order to help revitalize our downtown businesses and restaurants, the city should consider temporarily closing Campbell Avenue from Third Street to Railway Avenue to vehicular traffic on weekends, Friday late afternoon until Sunday evening. A temporary special event permit could be created that would enable our local businesses to use the public street and sidewalk to conduct business. This temporary permit could apply to every weekend or every other weekend or one weekend a month. It would authorize local retailers to display and sell their merchandise outdoors and local residents to provide outdoor dining that could provide proper physical and social distancing. This temporary permit should include requirements for COVID-19 safety compliance, ADA accessibility and penalties for non-compliance. This global pandemic has wreaked havoc on our small businesses to facilitate our local economic recovery. With proper safety measures in place, we can help revitalize our local economy and rebuild our much-needed sense of community. Thank you for your consideration, Susan and Mike O'Brien. The next email is from Alana Le Marchand. Dear Mayor Landry and Campbell City Council members, our family moved to Campbell a few years ago. Drawn to the vibrant downtown life and community, we see Campbell as a leader and uniquely positioned at the crossroads of transit, bike path, thriving downtown, etc. While we support longer-term pedestrian-friendly development, we are now facing a unique opportunity to make quick, modest changes that can have huge positive impacts on our businesses and community. One of the silver linings of the COVID-19 pandemic is to see people out and about, walking or biking and helping us imagine what Campbell could look like. In the very short term though, our businesses are in desperate need of access to more patrons, all the while cautiously and safely reopening following county guidance. We are writing to express enthusiastic support for closing down Campbell Avenue from Third Street to Railway to create social distance space to enable our community and businesses to reopen in a reasonable, safe way. This could be done partially or fully, which would help our community, though we strongly support the full closure option. Partial option, closed parking only for conversation, conversion to parklets and outdoor retail space. Full option, closed street parking through traffic and through traffic except to service emergency vehicles and possibly buses and community shuttle for accessibility. Why should we do this? Keep our community safe by making better community use of outdoor spaces. As I'm sure you are aware, studies show that COVID-19 transmission is slower, lower outdoors, so we should make most of the space. Expand usability of outdoor space and allow restaurants and businesses to serve more patrons. These businesses operate on very. These businesses operate on very low margins during normal times, and many will not be able to survive with the low occupancy implied by six-foot social distancing. Take the opportunity to trial and learn about the pedestrian and bike-friendly downtown Campbell says is a long-term goal. Follow the lead of progressive cities from Palo Alto to Paris. Specific to COVID-19, they list a link that's at paloaltoonline.com/news/2020/05/30/university-california-avenues-
That's time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That email was submitted by Alana and Ron Lee Marshon. Next email is from Jennifer Werner. "We would like to put forth our public comment that OPa, Mose, and Willard Hicks Campbell would like the opportunity to utilize public property for outdoor dining in order to allow us to do business in the city of Campbell in the most impactful way possible during these difficult times. Thank you, Jennifer Werner, Office Manager, OPa's." Next email is for Dan Orloff, managing partner at Prun Yard Cinemas. "Dear Mayor Susan Landry and members of the city council, please allow this letter to serve as our request for your consideration and support of preparing amendments to the city of Campbell's rules and regulations that will expand the opportunities for restaurants and bars to serve outdoors and on public property. Doing so will go a long way to alleviating the hurt being inflicted on these businesses and those that they employ during the COVID-19 times." Dan Orloff. The next email is from Burna Earnter. "Let's close downtown Campbell Avenue so pedestrians can walk, eat, restaurants can have outdoor tables. This is California. Best weather around the world. How are restaurants still not having outdoor seating? It will bring joy. Believe me. I spend my whole life in European countries. It's more fun. People love it." Compage de Campbell, signed, Burna Earnstern. Next email from Stefano Scalea. "I strongly urge the city council to implement plans to close Campbell Avenue between North Third Street and the terminus of downtown at the light rail tracks. We have the opportunity to create a unique outdoor downtown experience, reinvigorating our local economy, ensuring our local businesses that add so much value to living here can stay in business. Oh, and not to mention, safety from the coronavirus. It is commonly known that the coronavirus does not travel easily in air outside, especially with sunlight. With the additional space, you can have social distance tables and still have great feeling of ambiance rather than an empty dining room. I propose closing the street to traffic and allowing construction of terraces, temporary wooden seating areas directly on the street, or placement of tables on the full sidewalk and street, allowing for sidewalk and street walkways, similar to the farmer's market, just replaced with tables. A critical point, I believe, the downtown area should be off-limits to all normal traffic, police, etc., excluded. This is to open the space up to foot traffic and allow for dog walking, etc., and allowing restaurants to expand potentially into the street to allow social distancing, while remaining profitable with a similar number of seats as inside. The city could string café lights zigzag the street, providing safety light and adding an incredible ambiance. I'm sure that considerations like emergency access, handicap parking, etc., can be addressed. Appreciate your consideration. This. Best, Stefano." Next email is from Christopher Yash Yamashita. I'm sorry, on the pronunciation there. Chris Yamashita. "Dear Honorable Councilmembers, thank you for taking into consideration the livelihood of our Campbell businesses during the current shelter in place. I shared some ideas with Ken Johnson at the Campbell Chamber of Commerce this morning and was pleased to hear from other restaurant operators. I appreciate the city council's consideration changing the use of public roads and sidewalks. I think this could help businesses that we do not have revenue from a regular indoor dining areas. One thought that I appreciate from our conversation was there will likely not be a blanket solution to aid all of the businesses equally. I think it's important to maintain some accessibility to conduct businesses for takeout orders. Likewise, I hope there's a solution that would promote customers to patronize our retail neighbors and not inhibit their access. Brown Chicken Brown Cow does not have close access to East Campbell Avenue, and the initial idea of using space in our alley raises safety concerns with cars driving through the alley. I would appreciate consideration of allowing the use of other private property be used for our restaurant use. I look forward to hearing council's discussion on this topic. Thank you for your time and consideration. Chris Yamashita, Brown Chicken Brown Cow." Do you want to take it from here?
Yes, I got it. Next email is from David Blinn. "I live downtown at Third and Orchard City Drive and have seen the push of people who want to close downtown to car traffic. I think this is a bad idea and will negatively impact traffic, parking and noise for those of us who live in the neighborhoods just off Campbell Avenue, and it will make it harder to frequent the non-eatery downtown merchants." The next email is from Desilia Foster. "Per conversation on Nextdoor, I think that closing the street to cars can't be that difficult on Campbell Avenue. We have Orchard City and Civic Center Drive to go around this area. Parking might be a problem, but what if nobody comes downtown?" Anyway, because we are... Sorry, my timer is going off. "...conditioned to staying home. Wouldn't it be better to concentrate on solving the parking issue rather than declining the request just because parking is an issue? Handicap parking could be on the side streets." Perfect. "I love Orchard City Paris already. Café Americana, si vous plaît." "By the way, I am 81 and use a walker to get to downtown Campbell. It is close to a mile through Campbell Park. I would love to go back to Orchard City Coffee Roasting Company for my afternoon coffee and sweet roll outdoors." Next email, Joe Russo. "We are residents of downtown Campbell on South Second Street. We are opposed to closing Campbell Avenue to traffic. The residents of the street have the right to park their cars in front of their respective homes. If Campbell Avenue was closed to parking, all those cars would overflow into our streets. If this is a serious situation, the need for a next level on the first street parking garage with visible signage is necessary to accommodate. The loss of 40 spaces that was approved for Willard Hicks last year will already have an impact on our street." Next email, a Campbell resident. "We are residents of South Second Street in Campbell. We are definitely opposed to closing Campbell Ave. The closing of Campbell Ave would only worsen the parking on our street. The parking would severely impact our street and parking for its residents. The approval of Willard Hicks last year already deleted 40 city-owned parking spaces due to their expansion. Many people who work downtown use our street already for the parking due to a shortage of parking garages. The parking garage at First Street could use another level if this proposal goes through with bright signage." Thank you. The next email is from Ken Johnson of the Campbell Chamber. "Madam Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for considering alternatives for our local restaurants, which may just make it possible for them to survive in this very difficult time. With the new county health directive allowing outside seating at restaurants starting Friday, time is of the essence. I had the opportunity to host a virtual call on Monday with 15 local restaurant owners from all over Campbell. What is clear is that many are just hanging on, and with tight margins, the quicker and more expansive safe operating can happen, the better. I would say there was a consensus on several items we discussed. First, whatever the city does needs to remain flexible and adaptable as restaurants determine what works and what does not. Along with the flexibility, needs to be clear guidelines that can be updated as change takes place. Second, providing information on how to best work with alcoholic beverage control and the city to allow expanded locations for alcohol consumption is critical. There was mixed reaction regarding closing East Campbell Avenue, but what was clear is that infringing on any restaurants' curbside or takeout business would be detrimental. There was support for creating a representative group of restaurant owners to provide feedback and ideas to the city staff as quickly as possible. If the chamber can help facilitate that in any way, we are pleased to help. Sincerely, Kenneth R. Johnson, Executive Director." The next email is from Darius Sarabji. "Dear Mayor and council members, I am writing to you about Item 6 on tonight's agenda, discussion of outdoor dining on public property. I am all for us coming up with a solution to support our businesses, enhance and support the citizens who are about to emerge from a very difficult time in a very difficult time. What we stand to lose by inaction is the livelihoods of a lot of our businesses, their employees, and the life savings of so many of the business owners. There will never be a perfect solution, but changing perfection is not always the answer. Sometimes we have to make compromises. We may not be able to come up with a solution that works for everyone, but please give it a try. Don't go into your own corners. Try to find some common ground. Things that are important to the community, parking. Yes, we will lose some parking on some streets. For Campbell Ave, consider closing it and maybe having a shuttle or valet option where cars can be parked at the community center. For the handicapped, turn the parking on the side streets to handicap only. Provide safe pathways for those on the sidewalks. Provide safe emergency vehicle access as we do for the farmer's markets and other events. Act now, and you can save these businesses. Don't get stuck on the what-ifs. Maybe do a trial through the fall, then revisit it and use lessons learned to fine-tune whatever you decide. Acting now is of the utmost importance for us to continue to have a vibrant downtown. Just do something. Give something a try. We are all watching the meetings online, but in these times, not having a voice at a meeting makes this the only option we have. I hope you read this and take it into the record." Sorry, I'll be Campbell resident. Okay, the next email is from Deb and Jerry. "Hello, Mayor Landry and city council members. Thank you for your leadership, especially during these difficult times. We would like to comment of the proposal being considered to close Campbell Avenue through downtown. We are in support of looking at options for getting the downtown restaurants through these difficult times. We would ask that all impacts be considered as well on neighboring residents that will be affected with the following health and safety factors. Many people in the neighborhood have limited or no off-street parking, leaving them to compete for parking near their homes, creating an undue hardship, particularly for those who are elderly or have mobility issues, already the norm on busy weekend nights, farmer's markets, and festivals." Next bullet point. "For those that are fortunate enough to have a driveway, many are narrow, single-lane driveways. When the neighborhood is heavily parked with cars, it is difficult and dangerous to pull in and out of the driveway with cars parked closely to the end of the driveway entry. This impedes visibility of oncoming traffic, cyclists, and pedestrians." Next bullet point. "There is discussion on social media, Nextdoor suggesting that we set up downtown Campbell similar to Las Gatas. What is not mentioned, however, is that there is a residential parking permit program in place and enforced to protect the downtown residents. We would ask Campbell to do the same if they take this direction. Thank you for your consideration, Deb and Jerry." Next email is from Jen Coroner. "To whom it may concern, I became aware that the city council will discuss opening plans, and therefore I would like to recommend the conversation of the downtown part of Campbell Ave, Third Ave to Railway into a pedestrian zone. Not only will this allow for more outdoor seating space for restaurants, allowing for social distancing, but a traffic-free downtown makes Campbell safer and more attractive. Traffic can easily flow around downtown via the two service drives. Hopefully, this is valuable input to the meeting. Thank you." The next email is from Dominic Boitano. "Dear Mayor Landry, Vice Mayor Gibbons, and council members Resnickoff, Bybee, and Waterman, this letter is written as public comment to tonight's agenda item regarding outdoor dining. Thank you for the opportunity to submit comments. To start, we would like to applaud staff's efforts to bring this matter to the forefront quickly. Santa Clara County is allowing outdoor dining starting on Friday, and our local restaurants have been closed or operating in an extremely limited fashion since March. If our local restaurants are to survive, they need to reopen quickly, and they are going to need a little extra room. Our first suggestion, if at all possible, would be for council to consider voting tonight on a process that will allow at least some restaurants to open with expanded outdoor operations by as early as this Friday. We do not have any specific comment related to dining on public property, but with respect to dining on private property, one significant issue is the existing code requirement requiring planning commission approval for outdoor dining with more than 12 people. We see this as a significant bottleneck in a process that every restaurant needs to happen faster than the planning commission can accommodate. We would encourage council to consider giving the community development director temporary discretion to approve expanded outdoor dining on private property. At Allen's Corner, we have a central plaza area with lots of room, and the issues are simple. We could easily accommodate outdoor dining without the loss of any parking spaces, and there would be no changes to traffic patterns, no impact to pedestrian flow, and no increase in seat count. While some situations will be more complicated, there will be many others that are equally as simple, and we hope the city of Campbell can institute a process to allow restaurants to utilize expanded outdoor seating as quickly as possible. Respectfully, Dominic Boitano, Allen's Corner at Penny Lane LLC." The next email is from Tim Funnition. "To whom it may concern, as I became aware that the city council will discuss opening plans, I would like to recommend to close the downtown part of Campbell Ave, Third Avenue to Railway indefinitely to traffic. This would allow restaurants to place tables on walkways, increase seating capacity in a safe manner. This will also allow guests to arrive and move around in a much more comfortable way, especially while keeping distance to each other. Campbell Ave has been closed so many times for special events, and these closings are part of what makes downtown Campbell so special. At the same time, I'm sure that any concerns regarding handicap parking options or access for emergency crews can be solved, especially as numerous other cities are doing the same. It would mean a lot to me if you would consider my opinion for the decisions to be made. I'm sure a lot of residents share the same opinion. Thank you, Tim Funnition." The next email is from Randy Muster, Sushi Confidential. "Thank you, Mayor Landry and Campbell City Council members. As a Campbell resident for 18 years and a small business owner in downtown Campbell for eight years, I am proud to call Campbell home. Tonight, you will hear a number of suggestions from Campbell residents and business owners. Of course, some suggestions will work for some businesses, but not all. Some suggestions may benefit all or none. What entices one resident to spend money might not entice the next, and so forth. As such, it may be very difficult to come up with a blanket plan that would help all businesses. What worked for our businesses may not work for the next. So with this in mind, my hope is that you will be able to facilitate a flexible approach for any decisions you make. What is critical is speed in the decisions moving forward and the willingness to adjust on the fly. Focus on the negative what-ifs. We can fix them. Just don't limit the ability for each unique business to come up with..." Just don't limit the ability for each unique business to come up with suggestions that will ensure their own success. Rather than a one-size-fits-all, top-down solution, we should all work to help each other, to help each business approach, to reopen and reemerge successfully. While we may be able to find solutions that will address all business needs, such as reducing regulatory, licensing and other burdens, even if temporary, it is critical to see each business as unique and needing individual support. Finally, we all need to survive and we are counting on the city to support us in a unique way, in this unique situation, to make that happen. To achieve this goal, I recommend that staff meet with business owners in Campbell to help develop a detailed and flexible plan moving forward. It sounds difficult, but all business owners are in dire need of support from the community, support from the city council to survive through this unprecedented time. Thank you, Randy Mustrow. Okay, so that concludes the public comment emails that we received before five o'clock. I have a few more that have come in since then. While these were not included with your desk item, they will be posted online with the packet and forwarded to you. So the first one is from, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So the first one is from Lindsay Plantold. Hello, I am writing to express my support of transforming downtown Campbell this summer into a closed street and allowing businesses, including restaurants and retail shops, to operate outside. Similar to the Campbell Farmers Market on a more permanent basis, the summer months, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, our small business community has been hit hard. They need the ability to serve many patrons safely and the best way to do that is outside where transmission is rare and social distancing can take place. Our California weather and downtown layout make for a great outdoor experience. Imagining along bistro tables, outdoor performers, families, small tables set up in front of businesses to sell, a wonderful sight. While I'm sure there's details to be worked out, including handicap parking and emergency access, which are extremely important, I want to express my support for the initiative in Campbell. Sincerely, Lindsay Plantold, Campbell homeowner near downtown. The next email is from Sophie Riss. Good evening. I'm leaving downtown Campbell and I think that closing Campbell Avenue to authorize the restaurant to put tables outdoors is a really good idea. They are going to do it in a lot of other cities and they are doing that in France. For the people complaining about parking spots, just a reminder, there are two huge parking lots downtown. It will be for a few months, so many people can adapt and walk a little. Thanks. Best, Sophie Riss. Next email is from Jeremy and Sabrina Seegemeister. Hello, I'm writing to express my support of transforming downtown Campbell this summer into a closed street and allowing businesses, including restaurants and retail shops, to operate outside. Similar to the Campbell Farmers Market on a more permanent basis, the summer months. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, our small business community has been hit hard. They need the ability to service many patrons safely and the best way to do that is outside where transmission is rare and social distancing can take place. Our California weather and downtown layout make for a great outdoor experience. Imagine allowing bistro tables, outdoor performers, families, small tables set up in front of businesses to sell, a wonderful sight. While I'm sure there's details to be worked out, including handicap parking and emergency access, which are extremely important, I want to express my support for this initiative in Campbell. Sincerely, Jeremy and Sabrina Seegemeister. The next email is from Robin Reynolds. I propose shutting down Campbell Avenue the same way it is closed on Sundays for the Farmers Market to help support downtown businesses and to reduce cost of such a closure implemented for the months of June through December as a one-time support of restaurants and stores. This would enable them to utilize the sidewalks while pedestrians can use the closed streets. There's sufficient pass-through on the two streets surrounding downtown. Robin Reynolds. And that concludes our public comment emails for item six.
Wow, thank you. I took a tally, 10, 20, 30, we received 10, 20, 30, 38 emails from the community. I think that really is great that we're getting public feedback and it's really clear that people want us to open up and have outdoor dining as much as possible. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to start with Liz, but I would like to break it into different areas. The first one is what can we do by Friday? What can we do to help our businesses to have outdoor seating? Paul mentioned about an encroachment permit. I asked Brian earlier today. They are prepared, if need be, to have people start showing up tomorrow with a plan of where they would like to propose outdoor seating. The second would be what would we want to do more long-term? Whether it be close the street or come up with, you know, use a parking lot. So Liz, if you want to start and we can break it into what can we do this Friday and what can we be doing later? And then also your comment about ABC.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to follow your request. I will do my best. I think that what I heard from the conversation tonight was that flexibility is really important. To your point, what can we do quickly? What can we do without bureaucracy? Don't let the process become a bottleneck or cost a lot of money. I also think that it has to apply to all businesses. We focused on staff, I'm sure it was because of the conversations, but staff did not cover the topic of our retail businesses. And the other thing that we didn't cover was how do we make whatever decisions we make fair and equitable across all the businesses in the city. A business is located in all kinds of strip malls, individual buildings and centers. So I think we have to be very cognizant of supporting all of our small businesses, restaurants included. The downtown businesses have a slight advantage because they have organizations like the DCBA to organize and help them. Having a group work with the city, I think, made a lot of sense. But I think we have to be conscious of duration of any solutions that we come up with because doing a massive solution of expensive platforms across the street might be something that doesn't work for the downtown business community. So I don't want, I would hope council wouldn't get specific. I hope that we would allow the businesses to come in with their own recommendations. As I said, the ABC has come up with a two-staged approach. I don't know if staffs had a chance to review in detail the recommendations, but the first one seems to be pretty flexible for this Friday. And I think we should coordinate with that requirement. And then when inside dining is allowed, there's another set of requirements. And that involves a small process with ABC with a plan and a hundred dollar fee. So that's already set up for two phases. So I think if we can be flexible and adaptable in our process, I would support doing, take to say an emergency ordinance, but I think we could do a process of waivers. We could do a waiver that would allow any business to park in a certain percentage of their own private parking spaces. That's relatively easy to do quickly. I think that a lot of the downtown businesses do have access to parking lots behind or beside their businesses. And I think we could waive the associated parking requirement for their number of tables and things because all those numbers are going to change with the social distancing. So I think the waiver process is simply validating that they don't need as many parking spaces as they currently do under their current CUP. So I think we could do that very quickly and that would be good. I think trying to come up with a solution in a public right-of-way like Parklet's challenge that's going to take time. So I would like to solutions like expanding into private parking. I'd also like to look at solutions where maybe, we've all made an assumption that the food has to be served at the restaurant. It may be that a variation of takeout is people get their food and take it with them. And the reason I say that is if you read the regulations, you can't put tablecloths down, you can't put napkins down, you can't put silverware down, you can't put condiments down. It has to serve themselves. So when you look at the characteristics of what dining is going to be, it might provide other options for having community dining tables or things like that. So I think we need to, again, think outside the box, figure out what regulations apply from the state, the ABC, and really be thoughtful. One thing that closing down Campbell Ave. is a challenge is how do we, what do we do to spend money to close it down all the way across and make flat platforms? That seems like a problem. And two, one of the big issues with the Farmers Market that someone mentioned is the fire department required access. So nothing. So for this, for starting where we are now, I think giving a parking waiver and letting everyone move into parking lots and possibly looking for a communal dining area would be a place to start with, in downtown Campbell, with a committee with the downtown businesses, both restaurant and retail. We can't leave out our retail. And I think the places like Kirkwood Plaza and things like that can work very simply with their parking lots. I think we could do all of this very quickly. I'm concerned if we go, we might want to start on some ordinances, but if this is only going to last six months, maybe we don't need to do that. So we could be prepared, but we don't necessarily have to wait to make it happen.
Thank you. Okay, so Rich, I see your hand up.
Keep it brief. I agree a lot with what the vice mayor said. Yeah, I mean, I certainly like the idea of communal dining. You know, if we're going to supply certainly the area in back of of Bellagio and all that, it's city property. Neighbors, a lot of them are sending messages afraid that that will increase traffic, but this is temporary. If we're talking about too much, too many people parking and all that, which is a good thing, that's most likely going to be way after the pandemic has subsided and that's in quite a while from now. Some of this is just a Band-Aid. But I'm going to say it because I feel so strong about it. What can we do short term? The number one thing is to put some pressure on our county and the other Bay Area counties with most of the state and most of the rest of the country allowing people to dine in. There are a lot of rules that keep it safe. As far as I've seen, there's been no uptick. You keep the table six feet apart. You clean the tables. There's just a whole lot of rules that make it safe. So for those of you who call into the county meetings, one thing we can do is speak up, say, why are we, why we? And nobody else, are we delaying this over and over again? Eventually, I'm sure in the next few weeks, they'll have to give in to that. But that's ridiculous at this point where we know that just touching a table or something doesn't tend to give the virus. Into my soapbox, I'm mad. Yeah, I'm not into closing downtown. If we want to try it once a month, we could try it. But I know we've had a lot of discussions on that in prior years and that always gets difficult. Let's be technical, Bellagio. I think we're talking a lot about downtown. I was hoping this wouldn't be such a pure downtown. Can you hear all right, Brian? I don't know if you're seeing, oh, I thought you might have said you weren't hearing me. So certainly the Prune Yard is, you know, that has a lot of private land there. And if we're talking about there isn't enough parking in the Prune Yard, well, we're doing something really well. If in the next six months, we use up all the parking, I really don't think that's the problem. I've been talking to an awful lot of the business owners the last week and, you know, everybody's hurt and even the people you think aren't hurting are hurting. And so I would put this under an emergency thing and agree with the vice mayor that all stops are out, whatever it takes. The Prune Yard, somebody I think was the speaker from Alvin's Corner, I talked to somebody associated with that last week. They have, you know, that's a nice retail spot there for that, that new restaurant that's there. The coffee place, again, under this communal dining, if they want to do it, they'd have to propose something. But I would hope that there's open eating area. That's kind of what we do now downtown with Moe's and Opas and all that, that there's kind of, I know they separated out, but it's kind of a communal area and it's kind of a nice thing where you keep it around. And again, to the neighbors who use the term crowded mess, this is temporary. When we get to the point of a crowded mess, again, we get, we're doing pretty well. I don't see that short term as a problem. Yeah, so again, I think a phased approach, let's try something that works in the short term. Again, I like this idea of a communal dining areas all through wherever we can get, and I use Premier Yard downtown and these various retail places like Alvin's Corner that are around the city. And I forgot what that area is called around Kirkwood Plaza and where they have restaurants and things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ann?
Well, I can conclude pretty much the two previous speakers. I'm not interested at this point in doing a formal tax amendment to make changes to the downtown, to change the zoning. I feel like this is an immediate need and a temporary situation and we need to be creative and do what we can to help the restaurants expand either onto the sidewalk or in the parking lots.
Hang on real quick, Ann. We're having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak a little louder?
Sure. Is that better?
Yep, better.
I really think that, I think the plan should be flexible and adaptable. I like the ideas that were shared by a couple of the downtown restaurant owners and the chamber that it would be nice to have a representative group of restaurants to meet and kind of come up with some possible solutions that could help meet their needs. I think they're the people that are creative and probably have a lot of good ideas. I would include some of the retail businesses in downtown because I think that closing downtown Campbell Avenue is going to affect some of them and it may have a negative impact. So they should be part of the discussion as well as the neighbors. We've heard a lot of concerns tonight from neighbors that don't want to close downtown or Campbell Avenue. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I mean, we could look at that at some point in the future. But for the immediate, I think what we need to do is help these restaurants expand on the space they have and into the driveways. I do believe that it should be a citywide on a citywide basis so that all restaurants are treated equally. I do agree with that. And I think it's also important to look at some best practices from our adjacent cities and how they're handling this type of temporary permitting for outdoor dining. And I really would like to echo what council member Waterman said, that we really do need to put pressure on our county officials. I listen to the weekly briefings and I really feel that we need to put some pressure on them to allow indoor dining so that we do have, and we adhere to the social distancing. And I think that perhaps a letter from the mayor or the city manager to the board of supervisors would be in order. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul? Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. So let me just comment on the last thing that council member Biden said. I agree with you on the pushing on the county. I think obviously it helps if we can get back to indoor dining. I just have a feeling it's not going to impact a lot of these restaurants significantly upfront. Because limiting the number of people inside, they would hire servers and hire bus staff and all that. It may not be feasible when they're only at 25% capacity. So I think that's a good push, but I don't think it solves our problems today. I'm going to be in a lot of agreement with what was said tonight. I think we have to speed and respond to these number one. And I agree with the vice mayor of emergency resolution. We need to move fast. We're not going to stop at all, but we can fix things along the way. I think that we need to make sure we're not burdening costs on the owners. They have enough trouble. So there shouldn't be any city fees and other costs if the city can help. I think the vice mayor also said, don't forget retail, don't forget downtown. I have zero problem with retailers having outside displays. If you're in the courtyard and the courtyard people want to have displays in the courtyard, that's phenomenal. If you want to have displays on private property like the pay lot, if they can arrange out with the owners, that's tremendous. And I think it was. And also we say, we have to be cognizant not just of the retailers. But it's the curbside pickup for retailers, it's also the takeout and the door dash and the pickup. So we have to watch when we close things down, is there access to those businesses that are doing pickups and deliveries to other people? As far as mentioned like the pay lot, Chris Brown Chicken pointed out private property. It's important that we allow that. Because he, for example, doesn't have a patio in the front. If he can arrange some other property that helps him, I'm all for that. I like that Chamber Cannon and Sushi Bailey mentioned, get the businesses involved. That's a long-term thing. Let's not wait for that. Let's get them involved and modify things as need be if they come up with better ideas. Or something happens. I think Randy said, don't let the what ifs stop us. Something is going to be different than what we thought it was, or something is going to expose itself and being, it could be better than we did it. Fine, we can come back here, we can even come back here on an emergency basis and fix it. I liked, I thought the letter from Alvin's Corner Penny Lane was excellent. There's an example where they could be up and running immediately without impacting parking or access or sidewalks. It's a no-brainer. And I think somebody mentioned there's Kirkwood Plaza, I think the vice mayor said there's Hamilton Plaza. There's the Prune Yard. There's so many that could do that with so little impact. We have to figure out how literally Friday or Saturday they're up and running, because they don't hurt anybody. So I think, and I think there's a lot of them, even to the smaller lots where Sorrel Bistro is, it's a private lot. And if Sorrel Bistro loses some spaces there. I think, I'm going to guess a lot of people are walking to Sorrel Bistro and more people walk that way. If the Prune Yard's crowded, I'm downtown, I'm okay with that. So I think the ones that have the private lots of their own like that should have a lot of flexibility. Just can't get hung up on X spaces per, if a lot winds up with a parking problem, God bless us all. I'd love to see that happen. And we can modify as goes on. You know, I don't know that I want to shut down the whole street, but we haven't talked about. Does it make sense to expand and shut down one lane of Campbell and have a loop with one direction? The people we haven't heard from, that's not overnight, but we have to involve Public Works here if they can understand the traffic flows. And what happens if we do that, not just to parking in the areas, but where do the cars go with the loop streets? It may very well be manageable, but we should involve Public Works in that decision. I have a feeling, I understand everybody's concerns about parking and traffic. I live downtown. I know what that means for farmer's markets or street fairs, which I hope come back, to church events and to music concerts. But the reality is, even if they open, the restaurants are at a fraction of the capacity. They're not employing the same number of people and the traffic is down. So I don't think we're going to see those problems. And again, if we do, we can react to that. So I think that we should not be scared off by that. My last comment is, I think somebody said, maybe the vice mayor, think outside the box. So I'm suspecting that a lot of these restaurants, having talked to some, are going to continue surviving on takeout. But people want to eat outside. I walk my dog multiple times a day at night downtown. Orchard Green has become a picnic area. Everybody's using Orchard Green as a picnic. Distancing, which is nice. Here's a thing outside the box. Orchard Green between the library and the city hall has a big patio. There are probably other places. The city could put tables there and all of a sudden people could be eating there. There's problems of who's going to clean it, who's going to do whatever. I've urged the Public Works Director, by the way, to add trash cans because there's so much takeout. The cans get full every night. But if we did something like that that helped somebody take out downtown especially and walk and eat in the park essentially. Someday, those tables go into Campbell Park or John D. Morgan Park or Community Center and they replace what we have there. It's not even a loss of money. So that's the kind of thinking outside the box. If I can take out and sit down nicely somewhere and sit down at a table with other people, I'm going to buy, I'm going to buy or do takeout more often. So I'd like to see us do that as well. And the city can contribute and maybe find some spaces where we own the property. Say, you know what, make it a picnic area and enjoy. And if it's popular, we do. If it's not popular, repurpose the tables. But I'm in the favor, let's do something now and move forward. And if we need to come back to implement, let's do that on an emergency basis before the next week.
Okay, does anybody have any other last comments they would like to make? Okay, so I am in total agreement with what you guys are saying. We need to act quickly, we need to act swiftly, we need to be flexible. We need to have it be fair across the whole entire city. The downtown is going to have some different situations, but whatever we can do to get the whole city open. I like the idea of right now for Friday and this weekend, if you have parking spaces like Alvin's Corner or. The Prune Yard, basically let them put their tables outside, meet the requirements per the county ordinance. I would defer to Paul and Bill on, can we just do that? And does this existing resolution that we passed to say that code enforcement's a low priority? Do these fall under that ordinance already? Bill shaking his head, no. No. So I guess my question to Bill and Paul is, can the communal. Table area be established either in the sidewalks around the green? Or in that parking lot across the street from City Hall or the bigger public parking lot by Abolagio? I know there's some situations with the parking lot behind Abolagio. That they pay for some level of maintenance or they pay for part of that. So that we should be considerate to that. I think as much on the main street of the city or the downtown. If there is room to expand out, bring your retail racks out or tables. As long as we keep the public sidewalk that people can still pass and walk through. So Phil and Paul, I guess I'm looking for you to, what can we do for Friday? And then after that, to look at it long-term. I like the idea of having either a council committee and/or a public task force. Which staff would be a part of. And that we could have representatives from retail, restaurant, Prune Yard, Alvin's Corner, whatever. But that we have this larger dialogue with more businesses within the city. So what can we do Friday? What can we look our other way if we have to? And then the long-term, have a better study of closing the street or having a pedestrian malls and that kind of stuff. You want to start, Paul?
Well, okay, I'll start. We definitely need to bring Todd into the conversation. You know, setting up tables and chairs and putting them in Harrison Park or Orchard City Green. Makes a sense, but you know, there are still requirements to clean those tables after every use. Who's going to be assembling the tables and taking them down? There's logistical issues, there's cost issues, and we're at a time that we're cutting budgets. You know, we have to be sensitive to that fact that there is a reality and expense to this. The, I wanted to go back, Madam Mayor, to your question where the city attorney was shaking his head. I recall the resolution not being limited to the downtown. It was applied through the city. Isn't that correct, Phil?
Yes, it was applied throughout the city, but the scope was limited to just allowing. Existing businesses to sell or supply.
Essential services.
Products that they already are using.
Right, but so the essential services was in line with the county order. Now the county order is allowing these businesses to now open up. They're not changing their operation, they're just changing the location of where they operate. They're still serving hamburgers, they're just going to be out in a parking lot.
Correct, but the resolution that was previously adopted didn't deal with that at all.
Yeah, we may be.
So we could, but we could call another emergency meeting as quickly as possible and have, like we did on that one, that was a very short notice. We called a special meeting. Is that something that we, maybe not by Friday, but maybe by Monday or Tuesday of next week? Can we do something like that to allow them to expand? As needed.
Yeah, before we get to that, I think we need to separate use of public property and use of private property. Because we have pretty good control over the use of public property. We could issue encroachment permits to allow that. We could establish conditions to deal with the issues of cleanup. Now enforcing them could present some problems and, you know, Todd can probably address that better than I can. But that can be done with the authority we currently have as staff. It's the issues of working on private property that we would need some kind of resolution or action by the city council.
So I have a question for the council related to the downtown. It's cloud and clear that. There's really no interest of closing down Campbell Avenue. And I think what Todd and I were talking about today was. Was simply that, not closing down Campbell Avenue. But taking the existing parking stalls where they exist on the street. And laying some form of protection barrier there down the street to allow businesses to expand. A little bit more, but still allowing two travel lanes to flow. It's just that you wouldn't be able to park on the side of the street. What is the council's thought on that?
Rich is raising his hand first and then Liz.
Liz may have got before me, but let me, sorry Liz, or Vice Mayor. So again, as I was saying before, I think we sort of have to look at this in phases. And I've heard quite a few issues on taking parking stalls in front of people's places and trying to convert them to things. And I'm not sure how much it helps there. I do really like the vice mayor's idea. Of just defining areas, because that's what we're all looking for of, I pick up food from Sushi Confidential. Sorry, Randy, for mentioning your name, but hopefully that helps you. But I don't want to bring it home. You know, so where I eat it, does it have to be in front of his place? Can it be over there on, again, in front of Abolagio? I mean, if it's city property, just somewhere people can bring their food and eat it. There's, it seems to be a lot of desire for that. Wherever I go, but I don't want to take it home. I'm getting tired of taking things home. Yeah, so if we were talking about phases, to me, phase one would be, give me some area just to eat. I'm imagining the county at some point sooner than later is going to break down and say you could eat inside the restaurant. But it's going to be limited, so some percentage of the normal. So that will help. But you're adding more seats. Again, somebody's got to define, I understand there's details about how tables get cleaned. How tables get disinfected, making sure that tables stay six feet apart, all that stuff. So anyway, I'm sorry, I'll defer to the vice mayor on that, so go ahead.
So I'm agreeing with what you just said, Councilmember Waterman, very much so. I think the first phase is to allow, and I think I'm asking, is give staff some thoughts. Is there a simple way to authorize by a resolution on Tuesday when we already have a meeting? That staff can issue waivers of 50% of the parking assigned to a particular business? So a shopping mall has a number for each one of their businesses, something like that. And that, that'll help get us off the ground. And one of the things that's important, and I know the restaurants want this, is to sell alcohol. And there are requirements in the ABC phases about selling alcohol. So that's going to have to be worked on by them. The restaurants need to come to us and say how they would like to make these things work. As they transition into going inside their businesses, because I agree it's going to happen. So I think anyone can come to the city and say, we want to use this space, these parking spaces. And if we can do maybe an emergency resolution on Tuesday that simply says, staff can issue. A parking waiver. Then everybody's legit and then everybody can do something. Right away.
Paul or Ann, do you have any comments else? Paul?
Just that we move quickly, I'd forgotten, Vice Mayor's school, we have them Tuesday, so we could, we can, we could bring something up there, I assume, if it was agenda. That's a great point. I forgot about that. And then to answer the community development director, that's fine. I mean, I think, I think at least the starting point. Taking away those spaces and make them used makes total sense. It's something that can be done quickly. There's logistics, if it's like Councilmember Waterman said, shared tables, who puts them out? There's some logistics to work out here. And in downtown, at least, DCBA and the chamber can probably help you out. Best way to do that. But I think that's a great start. And before we do anything with the streets. I do think we have to invoke Public Works in there and talk about the impacts. There's impacts beyond people's fears of what might happen. There's real traffic concerns and there are people that study that and we can. But I definitely, through community development director, that's where you start, with the tables lined up, basically losing parking but not driving.
Ann, do you have any other comments or take food for thought?
I'm good.
You're good. So let me ask, I do want to hear from Todd here. Hi, Todd. So Bill, I didn't say hi earlier, sorry. So can we get a resolution for Tuesday? Is that too quick?
We can try and put something together. And I mean, yes, we can have something for you, I think. Whether it will do what you want, we'll have to see.
Hey, we're thinking outside the box. You know what? This is a learning process for all of us. We're going to make mistakes along the way. There's going to be hiccups. We have to accept that that's what's going to happen, but we're all working towards a common goal. So private, I'm sorry, for public property, i.e. the street or the parking lots. Or even the sidewalk if there's room. A business could theoretically come in tomorrow with a drawing and say, here's, I want to take over these two spaces in front of my building. In the public street, here's how I'm going to protect people. I'm going to sign my liability and say I'm responsible. So theoretically, they could be coming in tomorrow to propose that, correct? On public property. Bill shaking his head, yes.
They can submit an encroachment permit for that, but the vice mayor doesn't seem to support that.
I don't think that's what council said. I think, council, I correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Waterman and I and Councilmember Resnikov. Said not to deal with the public streets right now. Just work on private parking lots and public parking lots.
Okay, well.
And putting tables out in public spaces. That's what I heard. Not moving into the parking, street parking at this point. That might be down.
Okay, so if we allowed, say for instance, the parking lot across the street from City Hall. And if we closed the lot to cars and said. People, businesses, bring your tables in, set up an area, you're in charge of your tables, let people eat outside. We can do that quickly, right? Paul?
We can do that quickly, certainly. Yeah, we can do that quickly, certainly. I just, I don't know how effective it's gonna be other than it it would cater to the to-go takeout customer.
Um, we're looking for every ability and possibility here, though, okay? Where all ideas are on the table.
Yeah, just just one wrinkle with that parking lot. As I recall, we have to go over private property actually to get into that parking lot. So we'd have to make sure that that property owner is is agreeable, but obviously they've been letting us do it without any real, without any real penalty or consequence all these years.
Todd, Todd, let's, sorry, Pa- Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. We're not limited to that parking lot, though, right? We have all.
I'm just saying, for instance, if that is.
Okay.
So Todd, is that true? We have to cross public, private property to get to that?
Yeah, we we actually have a couple of issues with a couple of the parking lots that might be in uh what you might call logical candidates. So there there is the lot that that was being referred to directly across Civic Center Drive from City Hall, so that there is a kind of an ingress egress issue there. And then the other parking lot that's been also mentioned is the one that runs kind of uh right perpendicular or adjacent to Ab- Abolagio and and the Opus Building. And that, while that is a public lot, there is still uh, it was built under um, un- under a parking assessment district. And there is still kind of a of a maintenance issue out there, which I, which I think could could be addressed, but it's something that we need to be aware of. Um, and then, of course, we have other public spaces that had that have been mentioned here, like Orchard City Green and Ainsley Park. And 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 there's probably even a couple of other small areas that that we could consider. I think the issue here with the implementation would be, is this something that we want to treat? You know, for lack of a better term, something like a public park, where we're coming in there and and setting up tables for people to use uh to get to take their to-go orders. And under that scenario, that's something that that there's probably gonna be an expectation on on the city to do some sort of, you know, frequent cleaning, maintaining, emptying garbage cans as opposed to maybe entering into an agreement with either a particular restaurant or an association so that they can assist it with with that level of maintenance. I I think both are are doable. And and they're gonna require resources on the part of either the, either the city or the association or the restaurant. But clearly, if we want to maximize the use of those new tables and those facilities, we're we're gonna have to make sure that that is pretty tightly addressed. Otherwise, we're gonna do it for nothing. If if we're just gonna go out there and and allow the first party to use a table and it doesn't get cleaned, then it's not really gonna serve a purpose again the rest of that day. So we could be making a pretty significant investment and not getting a lot of return on that. Uh, to go back to something that Paul said earlier, and and I appreciate that that he was looking out for not only my interests, but all of our interests is uh, you know, while I think these are out of the box ideas, and I think, you know, in the grand scheme of what we're talking about, I think some of these are on the easy side of of implementing. Uh, but keep in mind that that if the expectation is is that this is something that the city needs to do, then we're probably gonna have to make uh a a a special capital appropriation or something to 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 allow us to do that. Because the the things that are being discussed here are not things that we could absorb in uh in our operating budget, and we probably don't have the capital resources currently identified. Doesn't mean that we can't find ways to do that, but we couldn't run out on Friday and start purchasing tables and and installing them. It might, it might take a little bit longer time, and that may be something that, since we are meeting next Tuesday and we're gonna have our first, you know, real shot at the proposed operating and capital budget, that may be something that that the council wants to factor into that discussion. Is I potentially identifying resources to allow some of these things to happen going forward. But I think if we if we do that, I don't think these are that difficult to implement.
Okay, uh, so when I mentioned taking over some of the parking spaces on Campbell Avenue, Liz, you said that I didn't, you and Rich didn't want that to happen.
I think, I think Councilmember Resnikov, myself and Waterman, um, I'm not sure about Councilmember Bybee. Um, we all had in our discussion that that wasn't the first place to start.
Uh, okay, I just, I'm I'm bringing us back to where we, where we are and where we aren't. So Paul, Rich and Liz have said that they don't want us right now addressing.
But we might, yeah, I mean, we we still need discussion or or let, we need to see the proposals, let's say, from D C B A and the.
Yes, yes.
Stuff. Um, I I don't know if we need to have council members part of that. I'd like to see their proposals working with staff, but um, I think we're also missing, again, there's the low lying fruit. Downtown tends to be more complicated because it's an active street. You know, I've mentioned, I think Paul was mentioning, there's a lot of other areas, the Prun Yard being the the most, you know, be- because it's got that central area there, which has, you know, that that's pretty easy for them to do something. I don't want to presuppose, but I think there's a lot of area there to do something. Uh, so we we could sort of take, the question would be, what what is the low lying fruit? And then, like I said, I'm picking Alvin's Corner, just because I talked to somebody there and we heard somebody speak tonight. And Paul was talking about, I think, what is it, those restaurants, I think, are at Kirkwood Plaza, there's like a couple of nice restaurants. So we we kind of look at those and say, okay, guys, make us, make us an offer and see if we could get the easy ones where we're not taking a major street and and do something with. And then, again, I'm expecting in the next few weeks, the county is gonna say, now, now we can allow people to eat in the restaurant. I want to echo what the Vice Mayor said about alcohol. I think that's turns out to be like issue number one with a lot of these guys, because a huge percent of their net income, maybe not their revenue, but their net income. And that's hurting the most when people take their food home, because they're, they're, you know, they have their beer. So again, I would like to see it that way, yeah.
Thank you. So let me, I, if I can, I mean, I agree. Initially, we we know that there's Alvin's Corner, there's Prun Yard, there's Hamilton Plaza, Kirkwood. They can be done so fast. They, they're a priority, just because there's no reason not to hold them up. The comments from Alvin's Corner were very very poignant, and that we could do this now, so what's, how do we do it? We should facilitate that. But I want to comment on on downtown. I think closing the streets is a long-term thing if we ever do it. I would like to see the ability to have tables in there quickly. I think it's fair to say Community Development needs to work with the businesses and see what works and how to do that. I I hesitate just to agree with the Vice Mayor that that it's a second priority. I I know what you're saying. I I know exactly what you're saying. It's that the others could be done tomorrow, so therefore let's do them. But if we wait weeks for to help the can, the downtown people, it's a little harder to just expand into the street parking. That's a problem too. We should do that as quickly as possible, but I think we need their help in how to, how to do it logistically.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I I think we're saying the same thing, but it did, it didn't the same when I heard it, but I think it is the same.
It's the same.
Should go ahead and and authorize that that's what we want to do in public, uh, Community Development, go out and do that. Real fast, I wanted to think, um, Director Capurso, question and a comment. Who now, like, if I go into Campbell Park, there's picnic tables. If they're, they're used now, I'm sure. Um, who cleans those today? Anybody?
Well, that would be us, but I, but 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 I guess what I would say that's different on that is you know, the picnic tables, for lack of a better term, are not supposed to be used by active picnic groups, right? So we we do have some social distancing protocol, and we are discouraging that. That's not to say they're not being used. And we are, and we are cleaning them on a daily basis, and we're power washing them on a weekly basis. But but I I guess what I was getting at is that if we, if we, if we create essentially, uh, I thought I heard the term, you know, something like a communal eating area, there's gonna be a different expectation of what the standard of cleanliness is and the frequency. And and I think that's just something that we all need, we all need to be cognizant of.
Well, I agree with that, but I think in this world, but if we do that, I I have a feeling we're creating similar expectations that are gonna increase your work at the places like Campbell Park too. And that may not be a bad thing. That's probably something we should be looking at. If if they are used that way, even if we don't intend them to be, we have an obligation to make sure they're they're clean. The the last part is, you raised a really good point of capital appropriation in this kind of thing for tables and things like that. I'm just saying this, in a world where we're looking to slash costs because we have a pandemic and a budget problem, you know, we need to make these businesses survive. Small businesses are our backbone, a- and they deserve our help to survive. But in a selfish standpoint, if they don't survive, the city's not gonna recover either. So I am certainly willing to invest money upfront, e- even while we cut some places to say, this is what it takes to help these restaurants and retailers or whatever to to come, to come back faster. We will get that back many times, and we have to do that for the city as well. So I'm all for you identifying the cost of that. If we go that front route, you have my support for the cost.
If if I can add one, one thing to that, um, because as as we're talking about places like Campbell Park and 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 John D Morgan and and parks and facilities where we should not be encouraging large picnic gatherings. You you know, part of the solution might be, might be relocating some tables from those sites to downtown. So so maybe it's not the capital investment that I first spoke of. It it might be that it might be, I'd have to take a look at that and see if if we've, if we've been epoxying the tables down, or we've just been placing them on pads. But there 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 might be an in-between solution where it could involve some level of relocation.
Might get a little feedback on that too, by the way, you know.
Okay, I saw Ann raising her hand too, and then it looks like Liz. Ann?
So I just had a couple of comments about, um, well, first of all, the communal areas and the tables. I I would really support more of a partnership with a, the restaurant and and um, working with them to really monitor the tables and put tables out there for people rather than have it be a burden on the city, and it would be up to them to manage the social distancing, the cleaning, whatever. Um, if if it's gonna benefit tha- them and their takeout and people being able to eat, you know, at Orchard City Green or wherever. And as far as the parking on the street, I um, I I would look at that as a second um step in this process. I would wait or get some feedback from the businesses down there. Um, because with social distancing and having to be tables six feet away, what are they gonna gain? Are they gonna gain two tables by by being in the street? And is that gonna help their business model? Um, so really, I I would leave it up to the, to their need and their request to come to the city and say, is it possible to do this? And look at that as as a future step.
Okay, Liz, were you raising your hand? You're on mute, Liz.
Thank you. I'm just gonna respond quickly to to Director Capurso. I think, I mean, J D Morgan Park and and even Campbell Park, I'm not so sure, because there are restaurants nearby. Um, we're we're really trying to help the businesses in situ, right where they are located. And that's, that's our, I I think, that's my mental, all the retail and all the businesses in their locale. We're just trying to help build clientele and and build an ambiance that reinforces the energy of these different businesses in our community.
So, um, thank you, everybody, and I I hear what you're saying, Todd. I think the tables are bolted down, by the way, or glued. Um, so I'm gonna go back to Bill and Paul. If I'm the Prun Yard and I want to drag my tables out of my restaurant and put them out in my courtyard, can they do that this weekend?
Well, I I wouldn't have any problem with that. You know, as long as they're on private property and they're within the common areas of the courtyard, I think they're meeting the spirit of the entitlement. It's when they. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm, I, there was a little blind delay, so I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, it's 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 when they get into travel lanes and parking stalls, that's where the issues come up, and then we can resolve them. But if they stay within their common areas, it's pretty easy as as Councilmember Resnikov was saying, that's a simple one.
Okay, so Prun Yard, you can move your tables out into the courtyards. Don't block traffic. Don't block parking spaces. Go for it this weekend. How about someplace like Kirkwood Plaza that has the, what is it, the oyster bar? And they do have some public sidewalks there. Can they move out into those areas?
You know, the, they already, I know Capers already has an outdoor area. You know, I, I would be okay with them in in parking stalls there, fronting their their areas. But I I, I may need to check in with, uh, you know, John Kirkorian to see what his feeling is and the spirit of what the council is saying. Um, and hear what their thoughts are, because it has to work for the owner as well.
Okay, so how about something like the uh Winchester Boulevard, Merrill Gardens down to past Casa Lupe or whatever, could they move out, uh, like on Winchester Boulevard by Merrill Gardens? There's a little bit wider sidewalks. Can they drag some tables out and put them out in front of their restaurant to have outdoor seating?
Sure.
Okay, Paul, you raising your hand, Paul Resnikov?
Yeah, I think I might help with that. I, in- instead of identifying, we seem to be back to where we did this before an emergency. Can we, can we then just move toward this? This would not be for the public streets, but for those private ones that the mayor's just mentioned, all of them. Can we move forth with a resolution essentially, um, not doing no enforcement until we get an ordinance written? That's what we did before downtown. That would cover Prun Yard, Merrill Gardens, all these ones, and we don't have to identify, and they can just move. And that, that's the simplest, fastest way, and I guess if they, they come in with a plan, if they need that, they're done. And then, and then I guess we we could say to work with the the associations on the public parking streets or or public areas of of the city parks in the city, Orchard Green and things like that. So maybe double resolution, one that says, one that says, let's get moving and not do enforcement on private property and ask the city to move forward with the stakeholders to come up with a plan, an ordinance or a resolution for the public property. Because otherwise, down each property, would that, would that, to Director Kamoyan, does that, does that give you enough direction to say we can run? And some people could be in business this Friday?
Well, you know, we will, you mentioned resolutions, that means we'd have to come back. I think we have enough flexibility to allow the expansion of operations on public property, uh, private property so long as it's within common areas and not obstructing traffic and streets and all that.
So do we need a resolution that 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 um, that delays enforcement like we did before? Is that how to do that?
Bill, what's that? Yeah, I mean, am I muted? No, I'm not muted. Okay. Uh, that would certainly, a resolution would certainly be one way to do that. It would make sure that uh the expectations are clear. I think what Paul is saying is uh, as a, an enforcement officer, he already has discretion to uh, on whether or not to enforce the codes. And within that, and he's considering that within that discretion, he is already willing with with or without a resolution to allow certain uses of private property that may not be in strict compliance with the code and with the uh various approvals on that property.
Based on what the conversation is here, based on what I'm hearing you all say, council, that's what I'd be willing to do.
Okay, so as of right, hang on, Paul, a sec. As of right now, places like the Prun Yard could move out on Friday, drag tables out into the courtyard and start serving pa- people, okay? Places like Kirkwood Plaza or the places along Winchester Boulevard could basically do the same as long as there's room on the public sidewalk to get by, they're putting them out in front. That that could occur without any other action by council, correct?
Right, and I would check in with each property owner for concurrence.
Okay, now, Paul, what was your, so right now, we can do that without any other paperwork.
And 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 the only thing I was gonna say is, for the public, I don't know if we have to do it formally, but do a direction that staff goes out with these stakeholders and figures out how to do it. And and one, one concept could even be, um, Director Capurso raised some good issues, how do we maintain it? Downtown, if 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 the Orchard Green is used mostly for downtown, downtown may be willing to sponsor it. D C B A or the Chamber or a private party, so staff can talk to them about that. That may speed things up too. Take the onus off the city to clean it and do all that. If that happens, we move even faster.
Okay, so one, we've agreed that there's something that can be done by Friday. What we've, what we've said is it's on private property. It's in areas that are not in the drive aisles. If they come forward to you and say, for instance, in Kirkwood at the Oyster Place, I want to use my three, first three parking spaces in front of me, the owner's okay. They could theoretically, if they talk to you, could do that by Friday. So we've got some action plans for this weekend. Then the next step is what can we do that would be coming forward on Tuesday? Cause we already have our budget meeting. What can be brought forward to us, whether it be how do we use a part of a city parking lot? Or whether they can use the street, but now some way to address the public land. And then that.
I would really like, Madam Mayor, when we come back on Tuesday to, to bring forth a resolution memorializing this understanding, even though we'll let them go on Friday. Just, it's just cleaner and that way.
Great.
CYA.
You're, you're on the hook now. It's coming on Tuesday, Paul. You and Bill, you're on the hook. And Todd, you guys are on the hook.
And the other point is it will also apply to retail. I know that's important to the council as well. So people can bring out their dresses more than just tables.
This weekend. So if I'm on Winchester Boulevard and I have a retail store, I can drag my racks out. I can put a little table out in front of my business. So I think we've accomplished at least this weekend, we are saying to people, here, we're, we're not going to force this. Move out. Here's what, how we can get you started. Tuesday, we memorialize it as a resolution. And then you bring forward to us what you can about how to look at private, I'm sorry, public lands. Whether it be the street parking spaces in front of sushi confidential, or if it's the use of the parking lot behind Abelagio or use of the parking lot across, uh, Orchard, uh, to the one that's across City Hall. So is that something you can bring to us based on our comments that we have something we can vote on on Tuesday?
I, I think so. Yeah.
I'm seeing the three heads shake yes over there.
And we heard loud and clear, no parklets.
Not yet. We're on the step two here. We're taking little steps. Okay. Liz, you had a comment?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify. So, um, places like Kirkwood in front of Capers, places like the Safeway on Bud where there's some Italian restaurants and some Mexican restaurants. They can all come to this understanding to utilize some of the parking spaces.
Yep. So people are by Safeway, the restaurants over there, they got a covered portico, whatever. Move out, make sure people can walk by, talk to Paul, bring your plan or, or have him come out. Get moving this weekend. Okay. Then we have this, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be bringing, um, it, it will probably be, uh, Michael Thomas and Economic Development working with all the businesses.
Your, Paul as you as a department. How's that? Okay. So that gets us through this weekend. That gets us to, to Tuesday. And then maybe come forward on Tuesday of what is the next step? The next step, i.e. closing Campbell Avenue. What, what that may entail, how to address all these comments like the neighbors, what's going to happen? How are we going to still have pickup and delivery? That kind of stuff. And then that may fall into the following week, which is our regular council meeting, that there could be something else brought as another step in this. And then I will say, um, there is the phone call on Friday with the county and all the elected officials. It's very hard to get a question in. You have to pretty much sit on hold for an hour prior to the call and you maybe not even still get in. But on Saturday, I have, um, the 15 mayors in the county have a phone call with Cindy Chavez. It's an hour. We each get to ask a question. I am certainly going to continue to apply pressure and basically complain. You guys, I know I'm good at complaining, right? But I get action, I get results. So I am going to bring this up on Saturday as a major issue with Cindy and Joe Smithian are on the call to see what we can get, put pressure on the county. I didn't forget about that item. Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? Do we have a little bit of a game plan here or a good game plan to get started? Anne?
Just to clarify, uh, Mayor Landry, that the conference call this week is on Thursday with the county.
I'm sorry, Thursday. You're right. I just looked at my calendar. Clarify Thursday. And there also is another call on Friday. Um, the Silicon Valley Leadership Group has created what they're calling the Mayor Circle. And we're supposed to submit questions ahead of time. It's Friday morning at 10:30. And that's another place to have more mayors together. And then that could be a prelude to what happens on Saturday's phone call. Okay. Does anybody have any, uh, other comments? Liz, Paul, Rich? Okay. Do you guys have enough you need to move forward? We're good? Are we done with this topic?
Paul and Bill, are you, are you both clear what we're bringing to them next Tuesday?
So next Tuesday, we're going to, well, this Friday, we're going to go ahead. Uh, tomorrow, we're going to start contacting all the property owners of shopping centers. Um, and then we're going to give them allowances per the council direction. Tuesday, uh, we'll bring forth a resolution memorializing this direction and our implementation. And so we'll bring another resolution, um, with, that more than likely may get altered as part of the discussion regarding how we'd be treating public lands, delivery, trash, maintenance, pickup, tables, chairs, um, for, uh, parking lots. And, um, I think what, park, parking lots pretty much and, and public common areas like Orchard City Green.
Okay. And places like in front of Brown Chicken, Black, Brown Chicken, Black Cow, they have that alley. Can we close the alley?
The Hicks property, I think that's what he was alluding to, Chris, was the Hicks property in the back there. It's kind of unused land, but that would be a private agreement between him and, and Bob. So.
Is there ability to close the alley?
No, they would have to cross the alley to get to the.
Oh, okay.
So that could be an issue, but we'll, we'll talk with Chris.
Okay. And then the last part of this would be for in two weeks, have a conversation with Todd, Paul and Bill and Brian of the potential use of the, the communal area of like what that would look like if we had a communal, a business brings out tables into a parking lot?
Well, if we have a special meeting next Tuesday, we can, we will bring it forward that, that day.
Okay. I didn't know how quickly.
I'm not sure what we're bringing forward related to pub, public land next Tuesday though.
Well, I didn't think you could do it by Tuesday.
Yeah, I, I think that we've got to go out and have some conversations with the DCBA and the Chamber. So I think we have enough from council that, that I think we know what direction to go in. I don't know that we have anything as definitive that needs to go in a resolution at this point. I think what we might want from council at some point, whether it's next Tuesday or the Tuesday after, is are you going to want us to look, um, are you going to want us, us to look beyond that at, 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 at public areas, whether it's on-street parking stalls or expanded sidewalk areas? That's where I don't think we have, uh, any good consensus quite yet. I mean, or I think the consensus is, is, is that we're not doing that yet. But is the council going to want us to look at those areas and perhaps develop some guidelines and policies to see if those are feasible? But I think in the short term, I don't think that we have anything as definitive that goes in a resolution other than we've identified some areas to, to have some conversations with, with, uh, with the downtown restaurants and other business owners about, about the feasibility of installation and helping, uh, helping each other operate those areas.
Okay. So bring to us what you can on Tuesday. You have, I think you've heard us all say what we do and don't want, or what we are open to. You've heard the community bring to us what you can as quickly as you can. We have a meeting Tuesday if we need to potentially call another meeting later in the week. And then we also have the council meeting in two weeks. Okay. Is everybody good with that? All you guys shake your head? Yes, honey? Rich, Anne, we're all good with where we're heading? Yes. Brian, I'm.
Prepared for a long meeting on Tuesday.
Right. But we're helping the community and we're helping our businesses. Okay.
But it's a budget meeting is what I was saying.
Yes. Well, we can expand the time of the meeting. We could start earlier and stay later.
Well, staying later, we do have a planning commission meeting that evening.
Oh, okay. Start earlier. Okay. Um, do we, uh, okay. So that item is done. Um, the next would be council committee reports, but looking at the hour, we haven't had a break. Can we adjourn the meeting and if need be make reports on Tuesday? I see heads shaking. Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody. I think this was a very productive meeting. I really appreciate everybody thinking outside the box and being creative. And I appreciate all the public comments that we got. And I appreciate all the staff and all the hard work that they've been doing. You're keeping us going. Paul, you got your department open. Todd, you got your people out picking up trash. So, and thank you, Bill, for being so accommodating. And Brian, thanks for keeping the city moving forward. All right, everybody. Good night.